And we're ready.
Okay, good evening everybody. Welcome to the February 28th, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting. And we're here at 345 High Street in Hamilton, in the council chambers. We have one public hearing this evening, and it involves annual action, plan, and the use of CDBG and home funds. Do a roll call, please.
Mueller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Fear. Vaughn.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lower.
Present.
Hit the quorum.
Okay. Your motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're gonna start off with offering a prayer by Councilmember Susan Vaughn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Father, we gather this evening as members of Hamilton City Council mindful of the opportunity to serve our community. We seek guidance, wisdom, and support in all decisions we make. We challenge ourselves to engage in meaningful discussions and to give our best always. We're thankful for the services provided by our first responders and ask for continued safety for all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no special presentations. We will go to the audience of citizens. This is a time for individuals to make comments. They may speak during this part of the agenda or when the item is up for vote on the council floor. Individuals who wish to make comments are, they must sign this blue public speaking book. Any speakers allowed up to five minutes. Jim Lottman, you are first.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I just wanted to complain. This is a city, I complained about many of my homeowners, you know, they're still singing down and no one's gonna fix them. They've been singing that guy for a long time. Who inspects those things?
Well, I'll tell you what, is that your only question you have for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Rich, I have a question. When it's the telephone company, I guess they do the inspections. Is that correct?
I think it's mostly some guests.
Hold on a second, I'm trying to get an answer. You know, does that make any sense at all? I mean, who monitors, who looks at, who inspects?
City staff does as well.
Including the telephone ones or?
Yes, and we have sent the telephone company many letters and they are typically cooperative about making those repairs.
Well, I've seen a lot of them, they've been there for a long time, you know.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you wanna jot down some locations that would help us out.
Jim told me, you can talk to him, when I go, ask one, call him and try to fix work.
You can give them to the city clerk or somebody in administration and then they'll take a look at it.
I just wanted to just find out about that. No problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Tonight, Greg Bisdorf.
Hello, Council. First time up here, I might be a little nervous, but I know most of you. Greg Bisdorf, 715 Corwin Avenue. I've been attending Jefferson Neighborhood meetings the last few months. In this past month, they've came up with their March agenda of going door to door. So I just invite the council members, I believe you've gotten emails with an invite, to join us on March 20th at 6:00 PM to carry some more weight as we go and knock on doors. Hopefully, there will be enough of us that we can kinda have a buddy system or two or three of us going around and split up the neighborhood. So if you have that day available, would you please join us at 6:00 PM? And we'll get the residents that are all attending and hopefully, we can get more out there and spread the good things of Jefferson Neighborhood that are happening in the area this summer. Because it's a neighborhood that needs a little help up, and I think that's very possible with your guys' help. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's March 20th at 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for making those comments. Thanks for everything that you do for 17 Strong in our city. Okay, the next two individuals are here to talk about 7551 Gateway. And do they wish to speak before the item is up for vote or speak now?
We'll speak when the item is up.
Right with, ready?
When the item is up.
Okay, all righty. Let me make a quick notation of that here. Okay, that's item 13. Okay, all right. Next, we have Adriana Reyes. Adriana here?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna come on up to the podium, please?
We were together.
Oh, you're together?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here and some of us will see you on March 20th.
Yeah.
Vicki Cross.
They, they were together.
Okay.
We just wanted to.
All right, powerful team of three, March 20th, right? Okay, that's all I've got of those who signed the blue public speaking book for this evening. Okay, we're not going to the consent agenda. That is all staff reports, all caucus reports and meeting minutes. And we're gonna go into the committee of the whole, which allows council to hear presentations, ask questions, and comment on these reports. I'll accept a motion. The regular meeting will be recessed. The committee of the whole takes place.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, and it is 6:12. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So our first presentation for Agenda Item Number One will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Joshua Smith.
Thank you, Daniel. So Item One is the recommendation relative to the creation of the Hamilton Development Finance Agency, which would be a port authority in the state of Ohio. The process, as I think we've talked about on the council floor before, is prior to City Council considering legislation, the Butler County Commission would have to pass a resolution. That resolution then would go to the Butler County Finance Authority, which is the county port authority. They would have to approve the resolution or the joint agreement. Once those two steps would happen, for council to actually consider this at the March 13th council agenda, those actions will have to take place between now and the 13th. If they do not take place, then this item would not happen, you would not be considering this legislation on the 13th. It would get moved back likely to the 27th. Letitia and I had a meeting this morning with Greg Daniels from Squires. There was some proposed legislation that was actually provided sometime yesterday. We had a meeting to discuss it this morning. So staff will be preparing more of a written update for council to see the content of that. But I just wanted to have this on the caucus agenda in case that the county and the Butler County Finance Authority were able to get their resolutions approved prior to March 13th. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on that particular caucus agenda item at this time? Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, will be a presentation by our Executive Director of Infrastructure, Mr. Edwin Porter, and our Director of Business Services, Ms. Christine Carr.
Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, Mayor Mueller, members of City Council, Hamilton community. My name's Edwin Porter, Executive Director of Infrastructure, and with me is Christine Carr, Acting Director of Business Services. We're here today to talk to you about natural gas and electric cost of service studies and rate recommendations. So the executive summary is that we are recommending adoption of new rate plans for natural gas and electric systems. These are based on the results of recently completed cost of service studies. Christine Carr will go into that here in a little bit more, in a little bit of detail a little bit later. The proposed rate changes will contribute to the reliability, safety, and the financial health of these essential utilities for the Hamilton community. So the first thing to address is why are rate adjustments necessary? I would call these considerations. And so, talking about our natural gas system, over the past several years, this system has experienced the effects of inflation, and that's through increased costs of materials, through supplies, our labor. And that's all required to maintain our system. The last adjustment to the base rate for our gas rates was in 2018. As you can imagine, inflation has been continuously occurring ever since. Inflation, coupled with no rate adjustment over this period, has degraded our ability to invest capital into our system. To put that in perspective, in 2019, we budgeted $2.17 million to invest in capital in our system. And in 2024, we have about $250,000 budgeted. And those capital investments are for the necessary items to maintain our system. So we're talking meters, valves, et cetera. And additionally, in 2023, we saw abnormally low usages. That's due to higher than anticipated temperatures during the winter months. And when there's higher temperatures, there's lower gas use, and when there's lower gas use, there's lower revenues. And of course, those revenues support our expenses. So for electric, the last rate adjustment was in February of 2023. This was step, year five of a five-year rate plan that was implemented in 2019. That was based upon a previous cost of service study. The fund actually performed more favorable than anticipated. So Christine's gonna go into a little bit more detail about considerations for cost of service. But based upon those considerations, we actually experienced a lower power supply cost as a result of higher generation outputs of our power-producing resources. We saw favorable market energy prices. So for example, in 2022, there were higher energy prices and we sold more energy into the market at that time. But in 2023, we actually divested of the AFAC, which is Fremont Energy Center. That reduced our power that we sold into the market. And so those prices were lower, so any energy we bought off the market, we bought lower and we sold less into the market. We've seen increased rec sales revenues for a couple of years. Lower than anticipated or expected transportation costs. And we've received some grant funding, which reimbursed previous expenses. And so it's not like grant funding that here's a grant for a project that you're going to do and you'll have a match. It was actually expenses we already incurred and it reimbursed us for those expenses we incurred. In addition, the system has experienced load growth, and that's both from new users, such as 80 Acres, Arthur, data mining, Saica, and existing users that have continued to expand. So that load growth, it spreads the fixed costs across more customers, and that benefits every customer within the system. So continuing to look at why adjustments are necessary. So this is CPI increases from December of 2023 to, or sorry, December of 2003 until December of 2023. I know it's really hard to see, but you can notice that from December of 2019, you'll see a significant increase in CPI and where it settled back down in December of 2023. That's higher than the average of those previous years. So essentially, CPI has been increasing and it continues on average to be higher than it has been over the past 20 years. But something I also want to point out is the value of our fixed-price gas contract. So this chart shows two different things. In blue, this is the Henry Hub spot price on natural gas. And so essentially, and once again, I know it's kinda hard to see, but that goes from January of 2018 until November of 2023. And in blue, that's the spot price, so that's the market cost of gas, if we were to buy everything just off of the market. And so that's in blue, and you'll see the variability. And in green, in 2018, the city of Hamilton entered into a fixed-price gas contract. And so in green, you'll see that fixed price, we've had the same fixed price for gas over the duration of that period of time. So you'll see the variability. Sometimes the spot price was a little lower than what we were paying, and sometimes it was higher. But since that contract went into place, since 2018, the city's realized $9 million in savings as compared to buying it just if we were to buy exclusively off of the market. So we've continued to realize those savings over the duration of that contract. In October of 2025, our fixed-price gas contract expires. So we're working now to understand what our future options are for locking in, if we want to lock in fixed rates for all of our gas supply, for a portion of our gas supply. So we're looking at those options, and we've started that last year, and we're going to continue looking at that as we approach the end of that fixed-price contract. And generally, what do rates support and what will our recommended rates support? So natural gas, increased operating and maintenance expenses, so we talked about that earlier. So labor, material supplies, et cetera. And then additionally, annual gas capital improvements to our system. So the recommended rates will support $1.5 million annually for each year for distribution system improvements. So that includes valves, meters, regulators, equipment, our SCADA control, our gas main replacement program, et cetera. And in addition to that, it would support $400,000 in debt service beginning in 2025. And so that's if debt service is necessary to afford expenses that are outside of that $1.5 million. Essentially, what that would do is support $1 million a year, per year, so for four years, that $400,000 would support the debt service. And if a large project that would require debt service is not necessary, then that $400,000 would be added to the capital availability, and it would equate to $1.9 million annually for our capital investment into the gas system. And also, later on, you'll see the anticipated increases of the rates for gas. And that would include increased gas supply costs, which are anticipated after October of 2025. For electric, the recommended rates are going to support increased operating maintenance costs, same thing that we discussed before about labor, material supplies, et cetera. About $6.5 million in annual capital investment. So that's pole replacement program, equipment, transmission upgrades, transformers, plant improvements, et cetera. And it also includes $8 million, which would go towards AMI, which is Advanced Meter and Infrastructure Conversion Project. So the city, along with AMP and through AMP, has applied for GRIP grant funding. And so this would fund 50% of that project. So it'd be $16 million total for our electric system to go to an AMI system. And we would pay for $8 million of that out of our fund balance as a part of this rate program. And then the $8 million would come through this GRIP grant. So that's been included in the rate recommendations that you're going to see. But once again, the alternatives that we like to talk about, when we see increased costs in our system, we try to do everything we can to absorb those increases. Those efforts include process excellence. So we have defined, measured, and reviewed key performance indicators that help us to focus on maximizing the value of our existing assets. We proactively maintain our existing equipment. We want to extend the life of those assets. We want to extend the life of our equipment, and we want to reduce unanticipated failures. We want to proactively maintain our equipment to ensure that we maximize our availability for power production, so such as our hydro plants. Essentially, when we have water that's able to produce power with it, we want to make sure that our plant is able and ready to produce power, and that's what's called our availability. So we want to maximize our availability in order to maximize the value of our assets. Additionally, we have in-house execution of maintenance projects and capital projects. So essentially, what we've done is we've hired and trained our crews to be able to perform work that previously we would have hired outside contractors to do. And what this does is it increases the knowledge of our workers, increases our institutional knowledge, and it also decreases our costs to do so. And in addition to that, we pursue any and all grant funding opportunities. This is really small up here, but just as a couple for the electric system, we applied for $2.44 million for DOE Section 247 grants. We've not heard back on that. We applied for and received $1 million annually for two years for the Section 242 DOE grants, and that's split with AMP, American Municipal Power. And those were awarded to us, and these were both applied for from AMP, through AMP, bless you. We applied for the DOE GRIP grant that I discussed earlier. We recently received $300,000 in an urban forestry grant, and we received over $600,000 to go towards EV fast chargers in our electric system. And in our gas system, we applied for what's called FEMSA grants in 2022. Unfortunately, we didn't receive those grants, but in 2023, we applied for $645,000 in grants, and those are no-match required grants. And so we're waiting to hear back for our 2023 grants and hoping to get those. And also, we received some support from the ARPA funds, which are all, I consider those alternatives to adjusting our rates. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Christine Carr, and she's gonna talk about cost of service studies.
Good evening. As Edwin mentioned, these rate recommendations that we're bringing to you are based on the results of cost of service studies that were completed. By definition, cost of service is a method to equitably allocate the revenue requirements of a utility amongst the different rate classes. So what that means in basic terms is it looks at all of the expenses that are needed to support a utility system, determines the revenues that are required to support those expenses, and then looks at how those expenses and those revenues are gonna be collected amongst the ratepayers. So a general process for the study is it always starts with determining what the revenue requirement is. What are the needs of the system? Next step is looking at all the costs, classifying them by function, allocating those costs to the different rate classes, and then finally, designing the rates. So we engaged a third-party rate consultant to complete these cost of service studies for us. We worked with Solvayl and Associates. They're a firm that's located in Findlay, Ohio. They're very well-respected within the industry. They perform utility consulting for municipalities across several states. They've also worked on cost of service studies for us in the past, so they're very familiar with our system. It was very much a collaborative and iterative effort between the city and the Solvayl team to get to the recommendation that we are bringing to you tonight. So with any forward-looking planning, there's several assumptions that have to be made when you're looking at projecting future results. We made very conservative assumptions in our study related to inflation rate for our expenses, customer growth, et cetera. We also based our revenues in the model on weather-normalized projections. That's something that's really important specifically with electric and gas that are highly seasonal and dependent on the weather. We ensured that these rate plans, we would meet all of our minimum fund balance targets and debt service coverage ratios. In the gas fund, as Edwin mentioned, we did build in the optionality for potential debt issuance if we identify a large project. In the electric system, we are recommending the creation of a new electric rate class, which would be high-load factor industrial. This is something that we're seeing more on the economic development side of large users. If you think of like data centers with the digital economy that we're in today, there's an increasing need for those kinds of services, so we're hoping to attract some of that load. We also assumed with these rate plans that we would be setting the GCR, which is the gas cost recovery rider, and the power cost adjustment rider to zero. That's a common thing to do when you're starting a new rate plan, is to reset those back to a base zero. The GCR is currently set at a credit of 2 cents per CCF. So that would be reset to zero at the start of this rate plan. The PCI is currently already at zero, so there would be no change there. And we're targeting an April 1st implementation date for these rates. So we have several goals associated with these rate plans. First and foremost, we wanted to develop rate plans that are gonna maintain the financial integrity of these systems, but also rate plans that fairly and equitably allocate the costs across the rate classes. We're able to accomplish this by moving rates towards that cost of service, which allows us to adequately recover our fixed costs. Additionally, with any type of rate adjustment, we're always, one of our primary concerns is how can we minimize the financial impacts to our customers? Specifically with the gas rate plan, we were targeting trying to minimize the bill impacts to our customers in the winter months when invoices are typically higher already because usage is higher. As part of this process, we also took a look at how we compare to surrounding utilities. It's, we understand that every system is different, and you can't always get a perfect apples-to-apples comparison when just looking at the rates. But we still felt it was important to kinda see generally where our rates fell. Our rates are currently very competitive, and they remain competitive after, if we were to implement these rate plans. Lastly, we needed to develop a rate plan that would allow us to develop and implement capital improvement plans that would ensure the safe, reliable service of these utilities now and into the future. So for the actual rate recommendation for electric, we are recommending a one-year rate plan that would be a rate decrease. So the average of that decrease across the system would be a decrease of 3.7% of base rate revenues. For the gas system, we're recommending a five-year rate plan that would consist of annual increases. Again, these are averages across the system. There's some different movement between different rate classes, but that is the average for each of those systems. With both of these plans, we will continuously monitor them, compare actual results to our projections. Everything that we know right now, all of the information that we have, we don't feel like we'll need to make any changes to these plans through 2028. However, it's something that we will monitor very closely. If there was a reason to recommend a change, we would bring that back to council at that time. This is a little difficult to see, but this is the actual proposed schedules for electric and natural gas. So you'll see each of our different rate classes and the different bill components. And then you'll see the existing charges as they are today, and then our proposed charges. So generally, across the board, the customer charge would be increasing and the volumetric charges, you'll see a decrease. And that, those decreases and increases in that fashion aligns with the results of our cost of service on where those rates need to be. So again, going back to customer impact, we took a look at how this could potentially impact the average residential user. So to keep in mind, these figures are based on our average consumption. So everyone uses energy a little different, but these figures are based on a monthly natural gas consumption of 56 CCF and electric consumption of 750 kilowatt-hours per month. So those are the averages based on our 2023 residential data. So what that means for the actual bill for electric, we're projecting a decrease of $5.64 per month in 2024, which is 4.4% decrease. For gas, we're projecting an increase of $3.11 per month in 2024, which is a 7.2% increase. So the net impact of those two adjustments, we're projecting to be an overall decrease of $2.53, so a little less than 1% decrease. And then by the end of the gas rate plan in 2028, we're projecting that the monthly bill will be, between those two services, will be approximately $7. bill will be, between those two services, will be approximately $7.19, more in 2028 than they are today. One other note on this is those figures include the base rate changes, which you saw on the previous slide, but also the reset of the rider, so specifically the GCR rider. So it includes the base rate and then also that reset of the rider from the credit of $0.02 to zero. For the commercial groups, it's very difficult to provide an estimated monthly impact that would be representative of all customers in that group, just because there's such a variability in usage. So you'll have smaller commercial users, but then you also have large industrial. So there isn't a figure that we could provide that would be representative of everyone. However, we do have the Key Accounts Program that includes all of the top utility users in the city. So we would be communicating the impact of these adjustments to those customers individually and work with them to help ensure that they understand how our utilities are charged and how that may impact their bill. But aside from the Key Accounts Program, we're always more than happy to help any customer understand how our charges work and how they could potentially have some control over their bill.
All righty. I want to point out one more thing here. So when we were talking about the customer impact in 2028, once again, we don't know what's going to happen with our gas contract. We have to renegotiate that after October. It ends in October of 2025. And so when looking towards 2028, that rate, the anticipated $7.19 per month, that includes an assumption based upon the data that we have today of some increased cost for our gas contract. Once again, we're not sure what it will be. We're going to focus very heavily on that over the next several years. But these figures do include an estimate of an increase that may be seen in that contract, so we wanted to include that. And then separately for our commercial users, so we have a Key Accounts Program and as a part of these rates. So if passed, we will reach out to each one of our key accounts individually. We'll explain to them, you know, how these rates will affect them based upon their prior usage, and so we'll make that touchpoint with them like we always do, and we'll explain to them on an individual basis, just because, once again, every commercial customer is so different on what rate class they're in, how they use power, when they use power, how they use gas, when they use gas, et cetera. So we'll make sure we'll meet with them individually. That way, they understand the impact. And this is something that comes up quite often. So this is comparing residential utility bills. So as everyone in this room knows, City Hamilton owns and operates all of our utilities. And when you receive a bill, you get a bill for all of your utilities. You get gas, water, electric, wastewater, but it also includes stormwater and refuse. And so what you'll see all the way on the left, so that is the bill as of February of 2024 for the average residential customer. And that's based on several assumptions that Christine covered in the slide before. And the second, so in the middle, that bar graph shows if adopted, as proposed, the average residential utility bill in April of 2024 will be reduced from $258.26 to $255.73. So that's comparing, you know, the first year of this recommendation. And then the third bar graph, so what this shows is an average residential utility user. And this is kind of difficult for us to put together, and the reason is, is because, once again, there's no one quite like Hamilton that owns all of our own utilities. And so what we have to do is we have to try to put together an apples-to-apples comparison. And so the top two lines you'll see, so that's for stormwater and for refuse. And so in order to get those numbers, on average, we took the average of several of our surrounding communities for their stormwater and their refuse rates. And then the next two lines below, that's water and wastewater. So those two numbers are based upon something called the PIWA survey. It used to be called the Oakwood Survey. And so that's 63 communities in the southwest Ohio area, and it measures the water and wastewater rates for those communities. And then the lower two, that information is for gas and electric, and that is PUCO Utility Rate Survey, and that's the average of the Ohio, like 16 Ohio cities, and that's for January of 2024 only. So that's how they publish their data. And so we understand that this comparison is not perfect, but we frequently get asked, how does the total bill compare? And so this was our best ability to compare that, our bill, to the totality of a bill that someone else may see. But I also want to clarify that every system is different. Every community is different. So some systems require, you know, additional capital. Maybe they're going through a big expansion. Some systems, maybe they're significantly older than other systems. Some systems may be under regulatory consent decrees, and some systems may just plan differently. So they may value, they may value something over another. We value rate stability and the ability to project our rates into the future. And so while we do compare, because we get asked this frequently, and I know council has asked us before, we wanted to put the context behind that as well. So the proposed adoption timeline, so on February the 13th, this was presented to the Public Utilities Commission. They did vote unanimously to support the recommendations, as you see today. February 28th, that's today, we're presenting at the caucus. On March the 13th, so this will be the first reading of an emergency ordinance by city council. March the 27th is the second reading of what would be an emergency ordinance by council and the vote. And the reason that it would be an emergency is so that the rates, if passed, would be put into place for bills on or after April 1 of 2024. So with that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Let's see if we got this right. Year one, there's zero gas cost recovery and zero power cost adjustment. Is that correct?
Yeah, so those will both get reset to zero.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. And overall, when you're looking at gas and electric cost per month, the total bill goes down based upon the decrease in electric and the increase in gas.
That's correct.
I want to thank you and your team for also talking to our key accounts, explaining all this to them. I think it's important that they find out as soon as they possibly can. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Just one point of clarity, Edwin, I believe it was you that mentioned our last gas rate increase was in 2018. Is that right? So again, as we sail through now the first couple of months of January, February of '24, and we look back and say six years, so the average consumer has enjoyed, when was the last time we negotiated a gas contract with our supplier?
Yeah, so you'll see, that was, you'll see a slight dip in this chart. And that slight dip is in March of 2020 timeframe. So at that point in time was the last time that it was renegotiated. I think they called it a blend and extend. So essentially, they renegotiated the rate, they extended the contract. And so that's why, as we're preparing now towards next October, we're starting--
Four years later. I remembered it had been quite a while. So again, as the mayor pointed out, the, if you will, the ultimate drop in utility costs for the average consumer. We realize that some of our residences are all-electric--
That's right.
--and things, and where there's a blend of other residences that are gas and electric, what have you. But thanks again for the graphs and charts, but importantly showing what the other utility companies do in Ohio and what we're comparing ourselves to as pretty much a low-cost provider because we own all of our utilities. So again, thanks for the presentation, Christine and Edwin both. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next up will be a presentation for Agenda Items three through five by our Planning Director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. Thank you. The first project that we have on the agenda for you tonight from Planning Commission is a conditional use request for 401 Elvin Avenue. This is a request to use this house as a two-family dwelling. It is a little complicated in the background, but because the person who purchased it was under the impression it was already a duplex because it had been illegally converted to a duplex. But, so they came in to rectify that and request it to be formally approved as a duplex. Planning Commission reviewed it, and the request required three variances, and ultimately, Planning Commission recommended to deny this request based on the variances. Do you have any questions about this project?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ms. Vaughn.
So I know one of the variances had to do with parking. And so it would, if there was no parking on the premise, it would just be street parking in front. And since it's on a corner, is that truly parking? I know you can't park so close to a corner. Is there any parking?
Yes, because they could park on the other street too, you know, on the other. So there's some on-street parking around there.
Okay. And then it says it's an extra-large lot. So if there were to be parking, would it be in the back? Is there a place you could concrete and put parking?
There actually, it's not an extra-large lot. One of the variance requests is, each dwelling unit requires, it's 3,500 or 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit, and there's only 3,600 square feet for that. So there's only enough square feet on that lot for one dwelling unit. And with topography and the small size of the lot, it actually would be pretty challenging to have off-street parking. It would take up all of the backyard and would require some work because it's kind of hilly.
Okay. So parking isn't an option anywhere on the property, then, is basically what it is? I misread it when I was looking at it, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this particular item?
Just make them know procedurally, as a conditional use, this will be the last time that you see the request unless you wish to ask for it to go on to a first and second reading. The next agenda item is another conditional use request for 1998 Pleasant Avenue. It is a project, a property that you've had multiple conditional use requests at previously over the past six years or so. It was Wayne's Garage, and now it's Pullman's Shop. And there's a lot of history back with this property, but ultimately, a house was demolished to do an expansion of the building. That never happened, and ultimately, what's wound up happening is it's become a gravel lot that people are parking on. So we are working with the new property owner to rectify the situation because we do not permit parking on gravel in the City Hamilton. We don't allow new parking lots made of gravel in the City Hamilton. And the new property owner would like to do an expansion of a building there, but he's working through that process, and so he's asked for a two-year conditional use request to continue to use it as a parking lot while he works through that process. So it's a temporary request similar to the NAPR trucking request that you've seen in the past. So this would expire and not be a long-term proposal. There's, as part of this temporary request, a wooden privacy fence is being proposed along Shank, as well as some landscaping in front of that wooden privacy fence. Do you have any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ms. Vaughn.
So for the past six years, has there been parking on gravel?
Yes. I'm not, I don't remember when the building got demolished, but there has been parking on it. Then the applicant believed that they had a right to park on it. But we had actually been sending code violation letters saying that you could not. So we had been doing enforcement, but that was not something that the new owner knew, and so we are working with the new owner to resolve the situation.
So where the building was torn down, can that be a parking lot, or is that a variance they're asking for?
It could be a paved parking lot permanently.
Okay.
But a gravel parking lot requires variances.
And if there's an expansion, it's going to be on that property, and is that a variance?
No. No. They would need to amend the conditional use to do whatever they decide in two years. Basically, in two years to continue using that site, well, they'll need to update the plan.
Okay. So the two years is to get funding, I guess, or is, why two more years? It seems like it's, it looks kind of a mess on the pictures, that's just my opinion, but I didn't know if there was any way of cleaning it up sooner or making it look nicer than two more years.
The applicant is here if you would like to ask him questions, but the goal with the privacy fence and the landscaping is to shield some of that.
And that'll happen in two years, or that'll happen sooner?
No, that would happen now. I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's the variance that will happen?
The variance is to allow them to continue to park on it on gravel, and so, because paving is expensive. And so they were saying, you know, if we're going to make an even better improvement, you know, we'd rather ask for a little bit of time.
Okay. So the wood fence and the landscaping are the two things that would happen sooner?
Yes. I'm sorry for not clarifying.
That's okay. That's okay. Thank you. That's good. I don't need to ask other questions. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one?
The final thing we have on the agenda is the rezoning of two properties. There's, in my, the way I view these is they're more or less kind of cleanup situations. The first one on Clinton is that one parcel that St. Anne's owns is not zoned like the rest of St. Anne's campus, and they are working through the process of doing a lot combination. So for them to do that cleanly, they should have the same zoning on all their properties. Second one is 255 Campbell Drive. You'll remember, a few months ago, we came to you and requested to rezone parts of Route 4 that were zoned industrial to B2 business district development. There was a parcel included in that request that actually is residential. So we are rezoning it back to residential, we're proposing to rezone it back to a residential zoning. Any questions on this one?
Next up for Agenda Item number six will be a presentation by our Finance Director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, members, Mayor's Account, good evening, ma, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. City staff is proposing a fourth amendment to the ODW lease here at 345 High Street. There are tenants here at this building. The third amendment was done all the way back in June of 2019. Since that time, there've been several changes, and they've not been encompassed into a revised lease. We've had two memorandums of understandings. You can see the dates up there. They were just delayed occupancy of the fifth floor during that time. It was the pandemic. I think about everything was delayed then. ODW did take occupancy of the fifth floor on October 1 of 2021. And during that time, like I said, there was emails, and there was also revised rent schedules. So here you'll see the revised rent schedules that took effect. They were $7,135 per month from commencement to September 30. It jumped up to $3,000. It jumped up to $13,000 from October 1st to September 30th of 2023. And currently, they're at almost $21,000 a month. The city, oh, and on top of that, there's also a five-year extension to the lease in 2031 when that expires. So the city is exempt from real estate taxes on the floors we occupy. Floors 5, 6, and 7 are private tenants. They are responsible for their own real estate taxes, and they pay them as part of their lease. And then basically, this MOU, or this lease, the fourth amendment, is just to encompass the MOUs, the emails, and all that into a final revised lease. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up for Agenda Item Number Seven will be a presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Jody Gunderson, Director of Economic Development. What you are seeing before you tonight is a recommendation by the Hamilton Community Improvement Corporation to fund a low-interest loan for Locomotive for a period of seven years. Locomotive is a free-ride hailing service. They're meant to be a good shuttle system throughout the downtown originally when we started talking about the Spooky Knuck Project. We talked about a shuttle system. We looked at a number of different things as a city, including the bus, BTR, Butler Transit, doing something for us within the district. This makes a lot more sense, I believe. And I think as we went through and spoke with them, I know a lot of things had to be changed and worked out with the city from ordinances that were passed. They originally started working with this group in 2021, I believe. And we're to the point now where we can push this forward. The one thing that I like about this particular company as well is that their job, if they're going to be successful at what they do, they're going to need to work very closely with our businesses within the corridor, that they are bringing people through. And I'll show you that map in just a little bit here. So it's really forcing them to come together with cohesive plan, to work with local businesses. They have apps in the particular units that they have the shuttles. They have three shuttles that they'll be running through the district. It will provide service over 2.5 miles. It'll be a continuous route. This is probably, wow, I was going to point that out as well, but I was going to point out the operational plans at this point. They'll run it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in later hours. Those are going to be ones that you're going to catch more shopping, you're going to catch more tourism and that sort of thing. This is probably the most important part of the map. Being able to show the drop-off points and pickup points, and what's going to be doubly important for us is that the shuttle service work well because it's going to hopefully eliminate a little bit of traffic onto the streets. People won't be constantly getting in and out of their parking to go shop at something. They'll be able to take the shuttle system, go throughout the district, and it'll be a definite asset to our businesses to be able to keep more of that tourism and shopping traffic in our city. The other thing I was going to say is both these gentlemen are local entrepreneurs, I will call them. Both of them went to Hamilton High School and kind of very impressed at the fact that, first of all, they're young. Second of all, that they came back to the city that they grew up in, and they want to see something good happen in the city that they grew up in. And, you know, that's, a lot of times, you don't get that opportunity, and it's great to see these guys coming back to do that. The terminal loan, we agreed, the Hamilton Community Improvement Corporation agreed to defer loans or the payments for the first 12 months. Terminal loan will be seven years, 3% to an amount not to exceed $90,000. With that, I will attempt to answer any of your questions.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Vaughn.
So they had trouble getting some of the shuttles, and that's what part of the loan is going to cover, is purchasing, okay?
Yeah, and I think what we were going to recommend too is that we try to expedite, if the city council were to agree to this, that at the next meeting, we do two readings so that we can quickly get those under their ownership much sooner rather than later.
Sure. Worst-case scenario, do we get the shuttles back?
That is correct. That'll be something that we will be capitalizing on, using as collateral for the loan, it's the vehicles themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Jody, is there a reason it's only going to C Street? It looked like that from the map. Does it stop at C Street?
I don't know exactly the reason for the route. My guess is, is they're looking to try capitalize on using three shuttles and the amount of time and frequency. And I think it probably also has something to do with our ordinances. We will probably look at this and determine, after looking at how it's operating, whether or not it needs to be tweaked.
Sure. I was just thinking about the hub and, of course, the Gavi and Ryan up that direction, so.
Exactly. And I think the mere fact that a lot of, there's going to be a lot of cross-culture advertising with their particular unit. So they will know that these other places are on Main Street, despite the fact they may not go all the way further down.
Okay. And this is going to be year-round?
Not, I believe that it is going to be year-round, which is really quite nice, especially with the hotels coming online here as well. I kind of see that as a added, you know, an added value to staying here and consuming goods here.
Sure. I just, I hope it isn't just event weekends and things like that, because we'd love to get people to the restaurants all over town.
Yeah. And this, again, is meant for residents and visitors as well.
Thank you.
Jody, is this revolving loan fund money?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think giving them an opportunity to do something that we need, and it's being done with Hamiltonians behind it, I think this is a great use of revolving loan fund, and I hope they succeed in a big way.
Yeah. I wholeheartedly agree. It is really nice, again, it's nice to see people that are from here come back here and invest into the city. It's something we talked about, the model that they have to pay for this thing, their system is going to be through advertising. So in order for them to be successful, they're going to really need to be working closely with our businesses.
Mr. Mayor. Jody, did they indicate, and I realize there were some supply chain issues in getting the units, are those ready now?
I believe they are.
Okay. That's what I thought from our last visit on this, and I've talked to the gentlemen that are going to be doing this, as you said, young, energetic guys, brothers, good family from Hamilton and things. So I'm hopeful, too, as we've all shared, that revolving loan, the opportunity that we're affording them in, here in Hamilton, the other businesses, as Susan said, hopefully further up Main Street in the short while, as Main Street continues to develop and things. So it's an exciting opportunity for them.
Well, and as we begin to do other parts of our commercial districts, it might very well be able to expand. I think that's going to be something that we'll look at later down the line. But again, to, in a lot of ways, it helps us manage traffic as well.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, on the caucus agenda for Agenda Item Number Eight, will be a presentation by our Director of Public Works, Mr. Jim Williams.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff, citizens. My name is Jim Williams. I'm the Director of Public Work Operations. Tonight, I am recommending, from the Department of Public Works, that we look at our seasonal maintenance labor positions, which are part of the Schedule D-2. And currently, that paid schedule was last revised five years ago, 2019. We want to make it more competitive market rate, so we want to possibly move that from the range 24 to a range 30. We put the budget impact in your package per person in your packet, so it's roughly 1,094,480 per person. We were budgeted up to nine people, and the reason for this is we are, after eight years, taking back over the management of all the city vegetation along 129, starting at the city limit, High Main, as well as down Route 4, all the high-visibility vegetation and landscaping, as well as the, some of the old-school properties that are now very large lots. And so we don't want to have our union employees, which are very, very highly paid, continue to manage that since we're taking it in-house from contractors. We want to utilize seasonal workers to do that work because our union workers, we want to focus on paving, which we talked about at the last city council meeting. Our goal is to have two full crews paving and milling, as well as other street activities, and then focus on the landscaping with the part-time seasonal workers. So that's the caucus report that we're recommending for tonight. Are there any questions?
Mr. Williams, the, when you said at the city limits, where the very tall Hamilton sign is on, as you're coming into town, historically, the Hamilton Community Foundation has maintained that area. Are they continuing the maintenance of that area?
The Hamilton Community Foundation will continue to maintain that area.
Okay.
So, and this is specifically the area just, I guess you could say, west of that. That's where we have paid various other landscapers over the past eight years to maintain that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
And that concludes our presentations.
I'll accept the motion if the committee will be closed.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:08. I'll accept the motion if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
My directors at time that we pull item three for a separate vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And that is due to an extension by one of our councilmembers. I look, I investigate that I do not have a conflict at this time.
Okay. All right. If we can just have the reading of Agenda Item Number Three, and then have a roll call vote.
Do we need to make, adopt a motion to pull that first from the caucus agenda?
That's fine.
Okay. A recommendation relative to a request for conditional use approval for parking on the gravel portion of the property for a period of two years and three variance requests to the Hamilton zoning ordinance, Ryan Pullman, Pullman's auto, and tire applicant.
Do you need a motion to approve?
To concur on the recommendations.
To concur on the recommendation. I make that motion to concur on the recommendation.
Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Any discussion on that? Can you do a roll call vote then?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Abstained.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 5-0, one abstention.
Okay. I'll accept the motion that, with the exception of item three, as noted and already voted on, that council received reports of the consent agenda to concurrent recommendations.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. For the record, the regular meeting reconvened at 7:08, and this voice vote just occurred at 7:11. Okay, I'll accept the motion if the regular meeting be recessed and a public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Can you read the public hearing into the record?
Can we adopt that motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And now, please read it into the record.
A public hearing regarding approving the city of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2024 through 2025 delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant, CDVG, and home investment partnership program funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
The audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving the objectives and uses of the CDVG and the home fund.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I am here presenting on the annual action plan for fiscal year '24 through '25 for the use of community development block grant and home funds. The anticipated CDVG allocation is $1,307,464, while the anticipated home allocation is Final allocations amounts have still not been released by HUD since our caucus reading two weeks ago. Upon final allocations and notification from HUD, we will make the necessary adjustments proportionally, whether in the positive or the negative, to adjust the budgets that are being proposed. We've decided to keep the annual need survey open until we receive the final allocation amounts, just to take and get any feedback from the community members as it relates to the proposed budgets and projects. And that'll also help steer our determination, depending on whether those allocations go up or down. You'll see here the same list, so nothing has changed as it relates to the projects that have been proposed. So you'll see demolition and clearance. As far as our public facilities, that'll include street resurfacing and improvements, improvements to Surf Cities Building, and also the YMCA. We have a number of public service projects, ranging from children's services to services for adults and internships, minority businesses, and also transportation. As it relates to some of the home projects, we will be focused, we will continue to focus on the down payment assistance program. Neighborhood housing services will also do some affordable rental housing and also some renovations for homeownership. If approved, the Finance Department recommends that city council approve the draft consolidated plan and annual action plan for submission to HUD, which, again, cannot be submitted until we receive final allocations, which will hopefully be sometime soon. Any questions?
The CDVG amount, has that, has that been about the same the last few years?
It has. It's decreased a little bit, not too much that we haven't. We've been able to, when it's decreased, we've been able to make changes to more public facilities and facilities instead of public services. So it hasn't been significant, but it's definitely been noticeable.
Has home funds increased?
Home funds have increased, not by much, though. It was like $460, $64 like last year, so not much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the objectives and uses, and use of the CDVG and the home funds? Looking at the signup book for the public hearing, nobody signed the public hearing signup book. Anyone else on council who wish to make a motion or make any comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing, that vote, that motion is carried. The public hearing is closed at 7:15. I'll accept the motion if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, so regular meeting is reconvened at 7:16. Now, I'll accept the motion regarding legislative items.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:16. Okay, we now go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number 10, second reading of emergency ordinance involving water tap fees and meter charge fees.
An emergency ordinance amending Section 939.04 and subsection A of Section 939.15 of Chapter 939, water of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to water tap fees and meter charge fees and miscellaneous fees and charges for water service, repealing said currently existing section and said subsection, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this, emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number 11, which is the second reading of emergency ordinance involving the position of administrative coordinator, reassigning pay range.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth, emergency ordinance number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13, 2023, as amended from time to time by amending the existing classification title of administrative secretary to administrative coordinator and reassigning the pay range for the classification, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Comments or discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 6-0.
And we go to Agenda Item Number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving a development agreement with Dorana Hybrid.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a development agreement and related actions with Dorana Hybrid Incorporated related to their expansion located at 903 Bell Avenue, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Or it's adopted, 6-0.
And we go to Agenda Item Number 13, and it's the second reading of an ordinance involving 7551 Gateway.
An ordinance approving a rezoning request for 7551 Gateway Avenue from R4 multifamily residents to RPD residential plan development, and approving a preliminary planned development plan for a four-story, single, senior living apartment building to 244 dwelling units proposed with five variances to the Hamilton zoning ordinance. Ryan Lunderby, Dominion Incorporated applicant, second reading.
Okay, we've got two gentlemen who I think signed the audience's citizens' book, and they wish to be heard at this time prior to the vote.
Worked this thing right? Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Lurchy, Dallas, Texas, representing the applicant, Dominion. I wanted to start off with a brief company overview, a refresher for you folks. Our company has been doing income and rent restricted affordable housing for over 50 years. We're active in almost two dozen states as a vertically integrated developer, owner and manager of nearly 40,000 homes. Everything we've built new, we own and manage. And then a quick overview of the project itself. Just to orient you, we're talking about the two red highlighted parcels just off of Gateway Avenue. The blue highlighted portion is a vacant piece of land that we would partner with the HOA to develop into a play area or some other amenity for their community. Again, here is the concept site plan you've seen before. So it's a brief, simple rendering. And then to touch on your feedback specifically that we've heard, when we build our apartments, we pay the same price for construction materials and labor as a market-rate apartment community. Yet, when we go to pay down our mortgage, our rental income is significantly lower, as well as financing costs are more due to the programs that we use. For our company, that means using efficiencies of scale and building an apartment community at least as big as the one that we've proposed. Our research shows that there's a significant need for senior housing here in Hamilton. Our initial efforts in the city began with the parcel highlighted in red, but working extensively with our future neighbors, we were able to identify additional land that benefited not only our development, but the existing community in Woods of Sycamore Creek HOA as well. For this specific site, our density is higher due to the needs of our potential residents and their accessibility needs. Parking, housing, amenities, green space, they're all going to be closer than other apartment communities because we will be serving seniors in the community. Let's zoom in here. You know, if a member of the neighborhood showed up to the planning commission or the city council public hearing objecting to our building heights and how it obstructed their views, that wouldn't be a first for us. What was a first was receiving near unanimous support from the HOA and getting them comfortable with the image on this slide, this one as well, which gave us confidence that this variance would be welcome in the community. You may have received emails from members of the HOA prior to tonight. You know, we hope that allows you to feel comfortable as well. Regarding parking and buffering, you know, parking variance wasn't our first choice, but a foliage buffer was very important for our neighbors, as well as the topography that we're sort of dealing with on this site. We spent time with our architecture and engineering teams to see how we could maintain that buffer and still meet our minimum unit requirements, which produced this plan that you see. We want folks to be able to park close to their homes. It's essential for any renter, but especially our seniors, who, again, have heightened mobility and accessibility needs. Fortunately, we were able to consult our extensive experience and portfolio to get comfortable with this internally. As a company, we've built 28 senior communities from the ground up in six different states. Across all those communities, our average parking stalls per unit is below 1.2. We were, we're at 1.22 with this one. Lessons that we've learned, that seniors drive less, they own fewer cars, and they're just more likely to carpool altogether. You know, at no point would the building be within 300 feet of the actual homes there in Woods of Sycamore Creek. And that wraps up the presentation.
Does council have any questions right now for the applicant here at this point in time? Questions for the Dominion folks?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Explain to me about your parking again. What was that, you told 1.2 and the 1.22?
Yeah, 1 point, below 1.2 is our average. We're, we've got 1.22 parking spaces per unit with this plan. But again, we've got the condition built in here that would allow for the deferred parking. I think I've got it in a fit plan that would bring us up to the 1.5 requirement if so desired.
And what would happen, what would happen if you have 244 units and the average is 147 dwelling units is what I'm reading here? If it was turned down, would you redesign to go to, to meet the requirements? It just seems like a lot of variances for this. So that's, I mean, I like the project a lot, you know, the HOA is agreeing with it, but I don't know if they'll agree with it 10 years down the road. That's what worries me, too, and just the, you know, just the overall density of it and the building height, and actually, the first three kind of concern me.
Okay, no, the 244 unit is, is, you know, what we'll need to make the financing, make the financing work?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
So with a three-bedroom unit, they all have to be adults, correct? It's over 55. Would they get the same allotted parking for that as you would for a one-bedroom? So if there are three adults living in that three-bedroom, they would still just get one parking place?
One and a half per bedroom, okay. Well, yeah.
Oh, so they would get one and a half parking places per bedroom, so that would be...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Vaughn, Kyrie Duckett with the applicant, Dominion. So we have a set parking ratio for residents in the community. It kind of depends on how many folks apply to live in an individual unit. We talked about why three bedrooms are specifically unique in a senior apartment, but it's one per bedroom at least per parking stall based off of income, the entire application that the applicant would be submitting. So we've seen in the past that initially, our initial lease-up population are the less mobile folks, and then we make adjustments as folks continue to lease up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? Did you sign the book? Probably shouldn't let you speak because that would change the way that we do things, but I do apologize. Anyone else?
We're happy to answer questions from the audience.
Let's do that. Anyone else on council want to add any questions, discussion with the applicant? Okay, thank you. All right, did you read that into the record yet?
I did, sir.
Already written to the record? Okay. Is there any motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion at this time. Motion by council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I'm really uncomfortable with all the variances. I'm really uncomfortable with the density situation. I believe that's a public safety hazard written all over it. I really don't like any of this. It just makes me really uncomfortable.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor, I echo what Councilman Ryan has just shared, the density and the fact that they're, they're asking for 244 units of a four-level building complex, just doesn't seem to want to fit. I, I kind of did the analysis with one of the neighbors that I spoke with in the, in the HOA, and said it's hard to put 10 pounds into a seven-pound bag. And essentially, that's what I believe is the developers trying to do. We would certainly welcome the development if it fit onto the, into the footprint of the property there. We certainly recognize that they're willing to work with the HOA and develop a playground or a park setting on the adjacent property. The owner of the property that I talked to and the residents said that was a deal breaker for them because of the offer and things. So again, I respect that. Again, I'll go back to my statement that the density really, really troubled me. The amount of car spaces per unit troubled me and things. So too many, five variances, if there were just one or two, and there was an opportunity to lower the ratio of units and things like that, I'd say good for us, but I, like, like Councilman Ryan said, I'm, I'm really, really troubled with this.
Any other comments? Let me, I'm gonna make a few. I believe you, you folks have a good product. I really do. And what makes this tough is, is because I personally think there's a need for this type of housing, I really do, and the affordability of this type of housing. But even since planning commission, the, the density concerns me. If it was a 10% variance and you had 15 more or something like that, that would be one thing, but this is almost 100 more in your request. So I also have serious concerns about the density, how that affects the infrastructure, and too many people in, in kind of one place, but I, I believe you folks can do the product, and I believe you do meet a, a need, and the affordability that you showed on the screen the last time, but I, I do have some real serious concerns about the density. Any other comments by councilmembers at this time? Okay, roll call vote?
Mohler.
No.
Pullman.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Vaughn.
No.
Nab.
No.
Lauer.
No.
That motion fails, 0 to 6. That ordinance was not adopted.
Okay. Now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number 14, it's the first reading of an ordinance approving our annual action plan for CDVG and home funds.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2024 through 2025 delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant, CDVG, and home investment partnership program funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plans to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Save Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Okay, thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number 15, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving the lease-purchase financing of an asphalt milling machine.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the lease-purchase financing of an asphalt milling machine, execution of a master tax exempt lease-purchase agreement and related agreements, certificates and instruments, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
And we go to Agenda Item Number 16, first reading of an ordinance involving bidding thresholds.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Chapter 169 of Public Works and Improvement Contracts and Chapter 171 Purchasing Regarding Updates to Bidding Thresholds as Permitted by Ohio House Bill 33, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number 17, resolution involving the urban paving program for Millville Avenue.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an LPA, federal, local, let, project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to authorize the city as a local public agency to cooperate with ODOT relative to the urban paving program for Millville Avenue, ODOT PID, number 115749, BUT, State Route 12911.31.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
Here we go to Agenda Item Number 18, which is a resolution involving a grant application for the ODOT safe routes to schools. application for the ODOT Safe Routes to School Grant Program.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and supporting the grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT Safe Routes to School Program for infilling sidewalks and installing ADA compliant curb ramps, crosswalks, and a retaining wall along Grand Boulevard for Crawford Woods Elementary and Garfield Middle School, Safety and Accessibility, City of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Much my councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Lauer, discussion, comments? I don't want, I want to say it again, thank you everyone who puts together the grants that get this, these safe sidewalks, safe routes to school. I mean, it works so well around Highland, these two schools needed, so this is just a big plus, and, and it's, I think it's a real compliment to our city folks who put this grant together because we're successful with them, so that's all I got. Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I am thankful just because of the amount of students that we're sending into that neighborhood who are walking to school. I think it was thirty-five percent, thirty-three percent, something like that. There are some roads over there that are, that are pretty dangerous, having sidewalks in our student, we still love everybody who put this together.
I know the teachers at Crawford Woods were concerned about this as well, and I'm sure you've talked to them, so hey, great project. Anyone else? Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Good with agenda item number nineteen, which is a resolution involving our side lot program.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real properties acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, one two zero five and one two two five Parkamo Avenue, one eight zero one Parkamo Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Much my councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Ryan, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number twenty, which is a resolution involving a side lot, South Seventh Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, five zero nine South Seventh Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Much my vice mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Ryan, comments, discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Go to agenda item number twenty-one, which is resolution involving, a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a collective bargaining agreement.
A resolution approving the terms and conditions of successor collective bargaining agreements negotiated between the city of Hamilton, Ohio and the supervisors' unit, sergeants and lieutenants, and the rank and file unit, police officers and detectives of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Thirty-eight, the Fraternal Order of Police FOP Lodge Thirty-eight bargaining units, and authorizing and directing the execution of said collective bargaining agreements.
Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Much my councilmember Knapp, seconded by vice mayor Pullman, discussion on this one? Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Audience assistant manager.
Thank you, mayor, two quick items. First, I just want to congratulate Christine Carr. Christine, have you actually, is the interim title been removed officially yet?
Not officially, like in the status.
So Christine is very close, I heard Edwin introduce her as interim tonight, I thought that that had already been removed, but, but thank you Christine in her role as the director of business services, she's done an outstanding job for the city, and congratulations on the promotion. Also, I see Tony Harris is with us tonight, just want to congratulate him and his, the fire department for all the hard work. I know that Mallory and Aaron and Liz and a few others were instrumental in that also, but bringing the, is it the OAPFF convention to Hamilton, Ohio? I think a lot of it's going to be held at the Spooky Noak Mixed Juice Development, but we should be seeing firemen hopefully across the entire city footprint, eating at all the different restaurants and going into all their shops, so thank you so much, that would be a huge benefit to the city of Hamilton, thank you.
Thanks for recognizing the great event coming here soon. Audience of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I have a committee update for OMEA.
Great.
Edwin and I and Bill Hudson attended the legislative rally with the American Public Power Association in, in Washington. We had the opportunity to have meetings with Senator J.D. Vance and Senator Brown. We also had the opportunity to meet with legislative aide for Congressman Warren Davidson all on Capitol Hill, so we discussed numerous issues, utility-related, grid security, all kinds of stuff, supply chain issues. We also had a very in-depth conversation with Governor Davidson's, or I'm sorry, Congressman Davidson's aide about additional federal assistance for North Hampton Crossing, and hopefully some help with block crossings and railroad oversight, because we will definitely need their, their assistance, but just want to say thank you to Edwin and Bill, those guys were tremendous on the Hill, highly respected, they don't know this, but I was pulled away from numerous other members and saying how impressed they are, but also impressed with the city of Hamilton, so kudos to our infrastructure team and our public works team, everybody involved and everything that's going on. We are definitely being noticed, and it's really cool to have folks come up to me from northeast Ohio and say, hey, you guys are really kicking some ass down there, so good job, so thank you to everybody.
No, thank you for that report, and thank you for spreading the word of Hamilton, Ohio to Washington, D.C. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to thank Joshua Smith and his staff who worked on the Vora Tech Park Project merging Miami and Butler Tech. This will give our young citizens a jumpstart into their careers, opportunities, all while supporting the local, regional, and national industry by providing a quality workforce. Just as an educator and the way that I see things, the trends going in our country, I think the, the use of technical education, career technical education is important, and I appreciate everybody that worked on this project, including Butler Tech and Miami.
I'm going to mention that as well, if Hamilton had a Mount Rushmore, and I said this to very many people, I think you'd have the Vora Tech project on Hamilton's Mount Rushmore with eighty acres, special nook, then we'd have to build other Rushmoors to add everything else that we got going on. That Vora Tech, that's going to be a template for education, I think, I think that important.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just want to congratulate all who helped put together the Seventeen Strong celebration breakfast, sorry, on Saturday. It was wonderful, two hundred of our Hamilton residents, thank you to all the residents who came out to celebrate, special people in Hamilton, all who won awards, the Department of Neighborhood, Seventeen Strong, Friends of Seventeen Strong, and Seventeen Strong volunteers, all made this such a success, and we've been doing it for years, every year it gets bigger and bigger, and June twenty-second is our neighborhood summit, so I encourage everyone, please register for it soon, it will be just as wonderful, so, but Department of Neighborhoods, Peggy Bangy, Brandon Sarver, all the staff there, unbelievable the hours that they put into it. I had to congratulate Peggy on being so organized, I don't know anyone who has it down to the minute when you show up for your volunteer service, so she does a great job and everyone there does, so thank you.
That event made everyone proud to be Hamiltonian.
Yeah.
Jivison neighborhood, thank you for being here tonight, it's great to have you folks here. Anyone else on council?
Mayor, I'd just like to offer a rebuttal to councilman Lauer's comments about Vora Tech Park, I think he left out two very important entities in this, one being city council. I know that city council has a lot of, a lot of requests that are in front of you, and a lot of what you have to decide is how you allocate resources. You made a decision to allocate resources, but for that action by council, the Vora Tech Park deal with Miami and Butler Tech, number one, does not happen. Number two, I think we need to thank the Butler County Commissioners for providing the extra two million dollars in ARPA funds that allowed us to put additional funds into the project and also get that deal done, but thank you.
Is there a request to go into executive session?
Well, that depends, do you want that to be a yes or a no?
I think we need executive session.
All right, then for two items, to consider the appointment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and to consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
Okay, I don't see the need for the first specific motion, is that correct, Madam Law Director?
That's correct.
Okay. Is their motion that council go into executive session for the stated purposes given by the city manager?
So, second.
Take your pick. Motion by vice mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Knapp. Okay, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
The motion's adopted, six zero.
Okay, we're going to go to executive session at seven forty-six, we'll come out of executive session just to reopen the meeting and then adjourn the regular meeting, there will be no further public action except to adjourn.